Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us tonight. I will call the meeting to order. Mr. James Westiva.
Here.
Ms. Better is here. She stepped off for a moment. Ms. Melissa Boyd.
Here.
Ms. Kate Messiness.
Here.
Ms. Michelle Russo.
Here.
And myself, Oliver Whitford. Pleasant. Please join us in congratulations. To the brag. Thank you. Could we have a motion to seal the minutes of executive session?
I'll make a motion to seal the minutes of executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. There was no votes taken in the executive session in this evening. And before we move on to community comments.
I would like to make a motion to move item A from the superintendent's report up to in advance of community comments.
And also, if we could please table the discussion action fundraiser South Keatson High School football digital discount card. I think app to our next meeting, please. I need a motion. Make a motion. Make a motion to do that.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 That motion passes. And over to. Pass it to. Two into two.
Thank you so much, everyone. It is my pleasure to formally introduce to the South Kingstown Public School Community, our next Director of Student Services, Dr. Kimberly Carson. Dr. Carson holds an undergraduate degree from Salve Regina, a master's degree from Rhode Island College, and a doctorate from Johnson &amp; Wales. She began her career at Valley Community School, a non-public special education program for students with significant emotional and behavioral needs. She has also worked, or she worked there as a special educator and a program manager. She has extensive background in student services, including a diagnostic prescriptive teacher, a coordinator of special education for Central Falls School Department, a department head in Warwick, and director of pupil personnel in North Kingstown. Most recently, Dr. Carson has served as the manager of IDEA compliance for Providence Public Schools, which has contributed significantly towards their turnaround plan. In addition to the wealth of experience Dr. Carson brings to South Kingstown, she also brings a plethora of awards and leadership experiences from higher education as well as professional organizations such as Arise, which is the Rhode Island Administrators of Special Education. These further demonstrate Dr. Carson's knowledge, skill, and commitment to implementing not only what is now best practices, but what will be next practices in education to meet the needs of all of South Kingstown students. So it is at this time, I please join. I ask you to please join me in congratulating and welcoming Dr. Kim Carson to South Kingstown Public Schools.
Okay, now you can hear me. I apologize. I want to say thank you to the superintendent, school committee, and South Kingstown School Department and community. You have all been so welcoming to me during this whole process of becoming the director of student services. It's been an honor and a pleasure to be asked to fill that role for you all. And I look forward to working with you, collaborating with you, and building the exceptional, building upon the exceptional opportunities that South Kingstown School Department offers to their students. It is an amazing school district. I got to spend time looking at your data while I was preparing for my interviews. And it's really, you have some great things going on. It is my hope to bring my knowledge and expertise to South Kingstown to support continuous improvement, increase opportunities for all the students, especially those with disabilities. I hope to bring a sense of stability to the department and to the district as I work to build partnerships with families and the entire community and educate all our children. I'm honored to be part of the new administrative team here in South Kingstown. Again, I'm happy to be part of this new wonderful community here. And I collab and collaborate with all of you in partnership during this new school year. Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome again. Next item on the agenda is comments from the community. Mr. Beasley.
Good evening. So, it's Earl Beasley. So the last time I was here, I believe I mentioned that I was gonna do a deep dive into the funding formula to see whether or not or see what's the issue, what the issues are. Okay, I'm still working on it. And tomorrow I'm gonna be sending in a public records request to write to get get the Excel spreadsheets for the calculations that they used to determine our our school education aid for this year for us and for Barrington. Now, the reason I'm using Barrington as a as the other district is because this year Barrington is getting $12 million in school aid and we're getting six now. Our six includes an adjustment for what they, what they call reconciliation. So before so back in earlier in the year, like in March or April, the governors were and it comes out with the governors projected stuff for all the districts in the state. And that one showed that we were gonna get five million. But then they had this, what they call reconciliation. So it includes money for school districts where they're losing enrollment. So it's like a two-year two-year ticket over the hump kind of thing. So this year, this is the end of it, as far as I know. It's last year. We're gonna get any extra monies. So the calculation that was used for the governor's budget, or the part of it had Barrington getting 11.5 million and us getting five million. Now, when you take, when you take that differentially, you divide it by the number of students each district has that they use to calculate it. What you find is that per student, South Kingstown, the amount of money that ends up actually coming to this district is 40% per student less than Barrington. Now, that's huge. Especially when you consider the fact that Barrington's transportation and out-of-district tuition cost the total is about two and a half million dollars. Okay, that's half of, that's half of what our, that's not, that's not even half of what our transportation costs are. So the reality is that no money, no money actually ever gets to a student in this district. It all goes to transportation. Now, people say, well, you gotta get your kids to school, so don't complain, right? It's not, it's not right. There's something wrong here. One of the big drivers, it looks like one of the big drivers is the, is the the combined wealth of the community. So when I looked at I looked at all the districts and the least amount of money goes for it's method. And the next least amount of money goes in there again, said we're third. Now, what are all, what's the common denominator between all those districts? They're all coastal communities. So the fact that we're a coastal community and we have all this high-value property is really, is a Is really, is, is a. It, it's a, it weighs huge in their calculation because. The states um. The state share percentage. For Barrington is thirty-seven and ours is fifteen. And I believe when this next year's. Numbers are, are calculated, that fifteen is going to go down even farther if we have, because we're going to have a revaluation, bring out a revaluation. I believe, which will be rolled into the December thirty-first. Tax bills. So that'll, that'll be calculated in the, in the, to the next year. So. Anyway, so. Um. I'm still working on it and I hope. I have some good news at some point, but you know, our, our people, town council members. They'll say, well, there's nothing we can do about it, or, or there's nothing they can do about it, our, like, our, our. Elected representatives to Providence, so there's nothing they can do about it. I don't believe. And lastly, um. So your. Latest uh. Enrollment chart. If it holds true. It's going to mean that our. Our, our students per employee ratio is going to drop again. It's going to go down again. It couldn't be as low as five and a three-quarters students per employee. Not a decade ago, ten years ago. It was six. Point seventy-five. Now it's five point seventy-five. The only other district in the state that has anything like that is New Yorkans. And that's why our two districts. Per student cost are the highest in the state now. Because every year, you budget for X amount of people. And for twenty-four years in a row. Come September. When schools open up, we have. Y amount of students minus. Year after year after year. So. That ratio continues to go down. And our cost per student continues to go up. If. If there's a change in the town council. Come November. Till November fifth. The gravy train may be shutting down.
Thank you, Mr. Beasley.
At this time, we'll close community comments and move on to the next item on the agenda. Which is our consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. Next item on the agenda is superintendent's report. I pass that over to the. The gas.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Um, I would first like to, uh, I have a little bit of a different report. Um, we're trying some for both uh. The community, uh, watching at home as well as watching on, uh, we'll watch recorded. Uh, as well as for members of this committee. So, um, I've prepared a slideshow doc, uh, to go along to accompany my report. Um, just so also we have a record of, uh, certain talking points. Uh. Those have been posted or that the superintendent's report slideshow. Um, for those of you with computer access who would like to, uh, follow along, is listed, uh, under the feature documents section of Board Docs. Um, it was posted today. And um, depending on feedback from folks on how the report goes. Uh, if this is something that is, people find beneficial or find a good, uh, use or tinker on the edges, I'll be happy to, uh, take any of those. Suggestions and either continue or discontinue or modify. Uh, so in my report. Uh, first off is the personnel report. Um, I'll first focus in on central office, uh, with Dr. Carson, uh, coming on board. Or when she comes on board on the twenty-sixth. Of this month, we will have a full, uh, central office staff as it existed last year. Uh, so I'm also pleased to report that, uh, Mr. Seeger's start date was able to get bumped up to today. And um, so his first day was, uh, with us and he's still here tonight. So, uh. So far, so good. I'm going to.
Looks like he's going to stick around.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, going for that. Yes, yes, as I bring that, if all of a sudden, I might need to modify my report if he does not. Um, I'd also, uh, now shift over to the, uh, school-based personnel sheet.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Can I, I just wanted to throw it at her, because I think some committee members are having trouble locating that, uh, report.
So if you, if you go to, again, go on to Board Docs. And then top tab featured. And then the, under the, the first document under featured is superintendent's report eight thirteen twenty-four.
It didn't, it didn't show up for me. So what I did is I clicked the first document and brought up another. List of feature documents on the left and I was able to access it that way. So if anyone. At home is having trouble or if anyone on the, the, at this table is having trouble, that's how we got to it.
Or the ref. Thank you.
You're welcome. Sorry to interrupt.
No, please. Thank you. Uh. So now I'll be referencing the, uh, school-based personnel report to welcome. Uh, those are to, uh, to welcome those who are joint, who are joining us. Again, this is strictly informational. Uh, as all of these now do not, uh, go through the school committee and are through appointment. Um, I do not have on here, however, the, uh, list of coaches. I. Omitted that on the slideshow report, but that wasn't in your packet and is available, uh, on Board Docs. Um, in terms of other, the. Main, uh, hiring that we need to do now are current leaves of, like, any leaves of absences. Um, that are coming about unexpectedly. Um, the other main piece that is currently underway. It is the, uh, listed under other, uh, is the coordinator position that is new to this, uh, contractual. Uh, period with, uh, NEASK. Uh, I can, I'm happy to report that the middle school and high school, uh, that they are. Completed, uh, in interviewing and that those, so those positions have been posted. Um, and then the elementary, we are, uh, working on a process. The current process outlined in the, uh, CBA calls for two administrators, uh, to, or two. Uh, people to do that hiring when we have three principals, uh, as well as coordinators who will serve across. All three. Uh, of the schools, finding the best way or the best people to be a part of that process. Uh, we're currently vetting and are look and will accelerate that, um, now that Mr. Seeger's on board and we'll see him tomorrow. Um. In the, uh, the coaches were in your packet, but again, not in your report, not in this report here in terms of, uh, the. Uh, what people are looking at at home. I'll now turn to the enrollment report. Um, I'm first going to note some changes in the reporting format. Um, we do have some increased enrollment, uh. From the last reporting, not historically. So we are, uh, still a few, uh, thirty or so students lower than, uh, last year. Currently, um, but where we are seeing some increased enrollment, there is some, uh, challenges that need to be faced. Uh, and some decisions that are going to be, to be met. So as I scroll down, uh, and we. And if you want to, in your packet, go to the, uh, projected enrollment. Spreadsheet that is there. Um. What we did is basically we have, uh, we added in the plus and minus. Uh, next to the total number of students at each school. That is not in totality. That is in the, since the last report. Um, what we've also done is we've added in the additional projected. And what I mean by that is. Um, those are students who are currently not in. Uh, not in Skyward, but do have appointments in order to be registered. So they cannot yet be included in scheduling or setting of class sizes. However. Um. Ninety-nine point nine percent of chance that they, that they are coming and we need to plan accordingly. Uh, both in terms of classroom supplies, in terms of adding to sections, um. Class, class size, uh. Considerations as well as, um, in the challenge that I bring up, transportation. So you'll notice if you scroll down and stay on the left-hand side of the spreadsheet, when we get to West Kingston Elementary. Um, under the kindergarten size. Uh, we are currently at forty-six. Students. So we are forty-six students at West Kingston in kindergarten and we are very close to the cap. In grade one. So we've had five students in kindergarten since the last meeting. Additionally, we have four students projected. Um, and another two in grade one. The other challenge here is not, is, this is a good challenge, I guess, to have, however, but we have limited space. Also, we had closed a section from last year. What this is going to require us to do, because we are anticipating both contractual limits and/or the potential to exceed those. And we have a limited amount of space. Um, the best way to tackle this right now, in my opinion, is to make, is to unfortunately, uh. We're going to need to transport students to students outside of their home district. Um. With West Kingston having only one classroom left available. We would end up, even if we opened up another section, even if. Money were no object, there just isn't space if we hit that limit. So unfortunately, or fortunately, we will need to transport students to other. Schools where there are spaces. Um, this is obviously a, a last resort and something that, uh, we do not want to do. We've returned numerous students to their home districts. We are, or their, their home zone school. Um. But when we get to both size restrictions and class caps, um. We, we need to make sure that, uh, students have a homeschool and that we are within those limits. As well as balancing out the class sizes across the district. Um. So again. Uh, depending on interest rates and the housing market and lots of different things, um. You know, we will also start, uh, in additional reports next time, should the additional projected, um. Change and not go over to the left-hand side where we expect it to go. Um, I'll, we'll be sure to, uh, designate if we gain any additional projected. Ie, if anybody else moves into the district that, um, we expect to register.
Can I make a request that going forward, um, I would love to see the historical data from at least the year previous. Um, so we can compare our enrollment and see it visually, like we, I hear the numbers from a visual person.
Yep.
Um, I know that, you know. As Mr. Beasley pointed out, for two decades plus, our enrollment has declined, but I, I, I've always loved to see the year before. It's good to just have a. Have a trend line.
So we can, we can do that. Actually, I was taking a look at, um. One of the April meetings. So again, we're referencing, I was referencing around thirty, um. Where really they, where we, uh, currently, most of that lost this year or that transition. Has been from Peastale up to, up to here in the middle school as well as the high school. Um, where we now have that grade nine being the largest class, which, uh, for. At the high school, but you also graduated the largest class. So we're around. You know, around thirty, like plus or minus, um, compared to what I was viewing from your April meeting, but I can definitely do that in the year's. Um, we will be making, we will be making one other change though, as we get into the school year, um. In terms of the report and that I would. Uh, urge the committee or I will, you know, uh. Ask the committee to consider is that once we get past October first, is that we start comparing everything. From October first on. And the reason why I would say that is because most of our title and federal funding, uh, set by the state for next. Uh, fiscal year is set by our October one deadline. So regardless of whether we increase, decrease, stay the same. Um. If we were, you know, our federal funding will be based off of that. And so we're going to want to keep that in the crosshairs of future discussions. And so, I'm sorry.
I just had a, a question. Um. Were, are any. Children whose homeschool Peastale. Being transported to other schools?
Um, I'm, I'm sure that there, I'm sure that there are historical, you know, uh, from. From other administrations that have come in, uh, or if they are, uh, and if I have off the top of my head. Uh, in terms of hardship requests, I'm, I, I can't.
Actually, no, I, I'm, maybe I didn't phrase that right. So we heard from a parent that got a notice that. Their child was not going to be able to enter kindergarten in their homeschool of Peastale. But that, that would make sense only for West Kingston to me. So I don't, I, I'm confused why that was happening. So that should not happen though, right?
That, no, it, it's, so again, what I would have, or would be the out, outliers, people who are requesting to not attend. Their, their home zone school. Um, unless it was people who were notified. That they were being returned back to their home zone school. Um, and they didn't, and they didn't want to, when they were appealing that decision. But in this case, I can't think of anything off the top of my head.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to follow up. Thanks.
Um. Ms. Vetter, just a thought. My neighborhood. Has been. Um. Zoned for Peastale. Since Southwood closed. Which is. A hundred years ago. I don't know how long ago it was, but. Recently, when Curtis Corner was closed and all the elementary schools were redistricted. My. And this is just personal information that I know, my neighborhood got redistricted to West Kingston. So perhaps. That person thought they were Peastale. But they actually have not been Peastale for a few years, because I know like my neighbors with the older kids that are. Um. Middle school or older. You know, well, the kids here go to Peastale, they say that, and it, that's not really the, the truth. So that person may just be getting incorrect information.
No, in this case, they have other children at Peastale. So they're, they are Peastale. So I, I, I don't, I think it was a mistake made, but I'm just trying to figure out why there was a mistake, but.
Um, it was just a thought. Yeah, no.
I can follow up with you and, um, about that individual concern. And again, and I have had, uh, folks who have, have reached out. When they've gotten their letter of placement, who are surprised, well, my real estate agent said. Um, and then I went and double-checked, uh, with Julia and our zoning and, um. Perhaps in the prior zoning, it had been, um, but the entire road that they were referencing. Nothing even on that road was zoned for the school that they were placed in. So there is some, um, potentially. Historical inaccuracies that, I mean, that this person was talking about, do what, do the real estate agent, but. Um, we have one zoning map that we share with, with folks and, uh, and, and that enrollment. Um, so if it's coming, it's not coming from us.
I'm assuming procedurally speaking, if we get communicated with about a discrepancy, like what Ms. Vetter just described. We point them to the admin.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um.
I, yes, please. I, yeah, just before we move on from the enrollment, I do remember in previous. Breakdowns, we had all the out-of-district tuition or out-of-district students, homeschool students. Are we going to see that on future enrollment reports? Because I found that very useful to be, be able to compare the. Um, numbers of students actually in our schools versus students that we're paying for that are going to other schools.
Yes, that'll be included in future reports. So. Uh, on the next slide, um, in my report, the equity audit update. Um, so I have a, uh. I met virtually with the audit, uh, team. Uh, the purpose of this. Uh, visit was to introduce to. uh, visit was to introduce, to talk about a tentative timeline. Um, to talk about uh, some of the data that they uh are interested in or that we have available as well as answer any questions. Um, I do, I am happy to share um that I have reached out back out to the team uh and have asked them for the data sharing agreement and to please forward that to council. Um, for those at the committee or in the community right now, there has been no data shared. A- as of yet, there will be no data shared until our council has gone through any data sharing agreement and that it aligns with both Rhode Island law as well as local policies and that they will guarantee the anonymity of that uh, of that data. And so again, I'm confident um in our team in terms of data that we have are available, the ability to get that information and make sure uh, local uh, identifying information is not made available in that in that piece. And I will make sure to have legal confirmation uh, ahead of time, both by uh, our council and make sure that our our technology uh, department is has double-checked that they have access to that data that's being requested. I've also encouraged that equity audit team to please take a look at the plethora of data that is already disaggregated and available. At through the Department of Education, whether it be Survey Works or whether it be um any uh, any of the state assessment data uh, that is into, so if they wanted to start there. Um, basically, the timeline uh has been pushed a pushed a month where they wanted to start getting data uh, now uh, in in late August. Uh, this goes back to the first item, our central office team, it will be complete on the twenty-sixth. And so making sure that uh, we had people in the appropriate seats who knew what data we have available, how to get at, how to ensure that it's anonymous um, and vetted correctly was imperative. Uh, and so we I believe that a month push of that timetable first to get uh, schools up and operational, get people in those seats and relatively comfortable as one can be in a new position. So that has us potentially starting with a uh, initial visit. Um, I'll be uh, or ask Terry to put out to school committee members. Um, they are vetting for a just an initial visit and would like to meet with members of this of this committee. September sixteenth, twentieth, or twenty-third. Um, we'll look for a a timeline that meets most peoples and see if they can accommodate. Ultimately, the final report would be in late January, February with a draft occurring in December. And then the last piece about the equity audit update is that this will become uh, the cornerstone, if you will, of our next strategic plan. It is my intention and in conversations to make sure that we get that equity audit so that we can have one of two things will occur in in my opinion. One is that we will start seeing trends and themes uh, through that audit that will either align with previous work done on strategic plans, both done by different superintendents and or strategic planning committees that that we can look to validate some of the work and the community input. Also, that was done even in terms of what you did for NESDEC. In terms of educational vis- visioning for what you would like in your next superintendent, what the community wants from the schools. And if there's a tight alignment, that what we would do is we would take the past work and the equity audit and use that uh, to move, go through the RIDE system, if you will, to create the strategic plan. If there isn't alignment, that will suggest that the equity audit has things in there that the community is going to need to digest, that the community is going to need to grapple with. And I think that that's going to happen either way. However, the community outreach for both reaction um problem solving and out-of-the-box solutions, um, I think will, if there's not alignment with past work and the equity audit, um, we will really need to bring the community back together in an open and transparent way to, again, address the equity audit and set a path moving forward. Um, so ultimately, the equity audit, I think, either way, is going to have a substantial impact on our strategic plan. It's just a matter of how much of it is stuff or our findings that align with past work as well as future vision. Should those be aligned? I think we can go through a relatively quicker process validating the work that was done in the past. If it does not align, uh, it will be a little bit more drawn out because the elements of and the necessity of public input into that strategic plan will be greater. And then uh, my next aspect is uh, for here at actually Broad Rock Middle School, a proposal for a therapy dog. Not the one pictured here. Um, all of these are stock photos. Unfortunately, I'll try and get some uh, as we get started with the school year. Um, but I'm pleased to report that I met with uh, Ms. Lisa Fontaine, who's a school counselor here at Broad Rock. Uh, and previously, um, she had coordinated with Principal McNeese and School Nurse Pine regarding uh, the willingness or the uh openness to explore a therapy dog. Um, so they began, she began that investigation and and we met. And upon the first thing that she brought up and that I would like to clarify for the committee and the community, um, that this would be a a therapy dog, not an assistance or an emotional support dog that we already have policy in place for. The dog would be a way to enhance the support our counseling department is already doing. It is not a program within itself. Um, and again, it is not um, Miss Fontaine's uh, assistance or emotional support animal. Uh, we would not need to, we would need to change policy potentially um, regarding those aspects, but we would be adding on to it if we, if this was something that we would like to investigate further. Um, so even though she coordinated with Principal McNeese and Nurse Pine, I did speak with both of them after meeting with uh, Ms. Fontaine. And both of them uh, again, uh, brought up that they and it had any initial concerns that they have have been met and that they support investigating this further. Um, as such, I took it upon myself uh to ask Ryan, actually, outreach to the trust uh, for us, and most of their requirements have been satisfied. Um, based on the work that Miss Fontaine has already done, personal insurance certified uh, by an accrediting uh, partner. Again, uh, and so as such, I bring this forward for the uh, committee's consideration about potential next steps. Um, potential next steps uh, basically would include um involving our local legal counsel uh, would to make sure that Rhode Island laws are being met or that there are things within current policy as well as to give us a uh, an idea of other school districts in Rhode Island and around that have similar policies as well as to take it again, a look at any uh, legal considerations. And also uh, beyond policy, we would want to outreach to the community. The and and get their reaction to it, as many people have very strong reactions, both both positively and negatively uh, to dogs. And so that's something that we would want to hear from people at large. So I bring this to your attention because it is something that after the presentation and consultation with both members of the counseling department, the school administration, the school health department um, that they feel is something worth investigating, uh, I would like to uh, again, to support that and investigating further. However, if there were no appetite or if there were opposition, I want, would like to know that opposition so we can go to it. And we do not spend time on something that if ultimately the community would not be in favor of um, that we don't spend time on. But again, the one piece that I would add on this is that this is not, again, a special program that is based around the dog. The dog would be there in order to, again, facilitate the, in many cases, those students often who are reluctant to participate, um, which we can, should there be, or if they, we are going to move forward, Ms. Fontaine has graciously accept uh, said that she will come and give the specifics and give all of the research as well as uh, any of the information that she's compiled so far. But before I ask her to come serve and uh, serve further in an after hours and present, uh, I wanted to get, put this on to people's radars to see if it was something that people would be in support of.
So I'll only procedural question on this particular item because it is part of the consent agenda. If we approve the consent agenda as is. Oh, I'm sorry. It's part of the superintendent report. So if we we uh, prove the superintendent report as is, we're not really having this as a as an actionable item. So right now, this is just you throwing it out there, information only. And then if we were going to go further, it would come as an agenda item.
Yep. So I'm putting this out there for your consideration for potential feedback. And then if it's something that uh, we're going to and take any concrete action into making it a reality, it would be something on the action item. Um, in that we, I would be asking for it to be brought to the policy subcommittee. I would have recommendations from council. Uh, and then there would be potential policies and or even additional insurance policies and recommendations that this board would then uh, be presented to them and then ask for action or discussion and then.
Um, thank you for bringing it up. I'll just give a quick summary of in last spring, we did have a presentation by Nurse Pine. Looking at how do we address our policies that are on the books? Forty-three hundred is service animals and is very structured um, in terms of what is allowed in that arena. Seven three oh five is animals in classrooms. So for example, if there was something for an educational purpose or a lab purpose, um, and our current policies don't cover therapy dogs specifically. And I don't know off the top of my head. I know there was at least one district that we found that has a policy and and legal was brought in on this. Um, so I'm happy to bring it back to the body if that is helpful. Um, but certainly wanted to just put out there that some initial conversation has happened and we are happy to give a report and an update should this move back to policy committee.
If better, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm just wondering um about the logistics and the cost. So I mean, I would, not that you have to give them to me tonight or anything, but I I do would, I would want to know about more about, you know, whose responsibility the animal is, um, who bears the cost of it. Now, having, being a dog owner. They can be very expensive. So I just like to have that information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick piece. Um, the current policies um, do state that any other changes regarding animals are at the discretion of our superintendent. Um, so that is something we we do need to further discuss should this come before the body.
I think this is a nice idea, but as I've stated before, I think we need to seriously look into um, allergies like mine. And I've I I am just putting this out there. I've had people tell me that their dogs are hypoallergenic and in ten minutes, I'm not breathing well despite using a inhaler. So um, I I just, I'd hate to see one of our middle school kiddos be put in that type of position. So I think we, that's one thing in addition to what you've said here that that I think needs to be investigated.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Uh, next slide, please. Yeah. So AI and education. Uh, I am very pleased to to report um that uh, I attended a AI in K through twelve education workshop along with Mr. Lonergan uh, and Mr. Snow. Um, this was held at URI and featured URI professors as well as uh, folks from RIDE as well as uh, profession local professional organizations, uh, RISTI and CS four RI or Computer Science for Rhode Island. Um, RIDE has promulgated that or has put initial timetable of fall of twenty twenty-four where they will be releasing guidance and that they will, they plan to continue uh specifically introductory AI professional development, um, capitalizing on the strengths of the CS four RI. At this workshop, it was primarily based um, or the tools and and diagrams that folks had uh, or blueprints, if you will, um, off of teachai.org. Um, I found specifically um, AI guidance for schools toolkit uh, particularly useful. Um, and the one thing that I saw that I was pleased to see and that I have not been. Um, so I've been involved in various technical aspects in education. Um, and this was something that I was very pleased to see that I have not seen in others. Um, so on the teachai.org and the guidance toolkit for schools specifically, it had balance to it. It had balance in that it highlighted both potential benefits and potential risks. So while they talked about the ability of uh, AI to give immediate feedback, it also talked about, uh, you know, the potential drawbacks of that not coming from a person, having that happen so rapidly that a discussion with the teacher in question might be, you know, might be take second, might fall off. Um, and so again, it has some very practical pieces in there. And I think does provide a nice roadmap. However, I I would also go back to part of my earlier report and kind of break down AI into two pieces. And this is just being realistic. I think that in terms of our short-term awareness with school starting in in two weeks that we can focus in and focus in on, and in many cases, at the very basic level uh, and awareness, making sure our educators have awareness and that it's got to be an awareness that also has that balance. It's got to have that balance for not just here's AI and kids are cheating with it or plagiarizing with it. It's here is a tool that we can use both professionally uh, to improve our craft. It is not, you know, ultimately, um, I think that our educators are are such that is, it's a tool that we can empower them. However, the the strength of any teacher and the strength of any education uh, is doing what Google can't, and that's making it personal. And that's making connections and that's making sure it's built on a relationship uh, of trust and mutual support. And I don't see AI doing that. I see AI being a tool for our wonderful educators uh, to use in pursuit of that. So I think we need to make sure that there's a balanced awareness. I know that uh, in conversations with our technology department, that in terms of future professional development, both for Pete, those who are already up and running, that we make sure that 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 they're balanced and that we support not only those who are okay, I'll do it. What is it type of technology people? I'll I'll harness it, but that we also again, show people and we provide professional development on the most basic aspects of it. And so the and also in the short term, we want to make sure that we support our existing tools. Before we go out and invest in anything else, we've needs to, we need to see what our current what our current devices have, what just, what do we have at our disposal? Uh, what are the pros and cons? Um, I know that we'd had discussions about, you know, um, where is AI garnering all of this information from that they're running these models from? And they're potentially, or not potentially, they're getting them from us. And they're getting them from ours and our submissions and and the things that we have, and they're selling it back to us. Well, what do we already have in place that we're already paying for that we can, you know, that we can tap into um, and that we have that level of of trust. So support of our existing tools and a review of our operations and current workflows. Um, you know, this was something that we're currently doing, making sure that our forms are all active on the website, taking a look at what can get an automatic response. What is something that is um, you know, not job enhancing, but job deteriorating? And is there something, uh, is there a role for AI in our existing operations? And then in the long term, really, we need to And then in the long term, really, we need to focus in on how does AI fit into our core values about teaching and learning? And what are our outcomes for all of our students and how does that fit into the vision of the graduate? So it's there that I would say, and I would go back to. We need to make sure that in our strategic plan, AI is included in that. And that it is directly tied to those core values, because ultimately for AI to get operationalized. People need to see and know how it is affecting those outcomes. And then last, lastly, uh we would then long-term need to support that both with policy and a piece that is not here and potentially fiscally. And what are the implications of those? So um. Again, AI and education, it is evolving every single day, evolving is the wrong word. It is being shaped in, or inaccurate, or depending. Um but again, the policies that we would have written when ChatGPT first got opened up versus the policies that we would have to write. Right now, um we, we're going to need to be in constant iteration. And I think that that is a part of our, that is a, a, a part of our reality. And that we just need to make sure that our systems and operations and policies are nimble enough to iterate just as quickly. Um to meet both the challenges and the potential uh strengths that they have, and I'm, I, I think we can do that.
Miss Messina.
So I have very strong opinions on AI in general, never mind in education, and I'll keep most of them to myself at the moment. But what I will say is that I live right now in my professional world. Um we, our company is building AI into every of, every aspect of our job function. And it is in, in infancy stage. And while I think it's typically smart to stay kind of a little bit ahead of the curve when it comes to technology. I just beg that we take a look at what happened when social media and smartphones. Came to town ten, well, now fourteen years ago, and everybody jumped to embrace it. And in my personal opinion, social media and its infuse and how it has changed our society has. In effect, destroyed a lot of things and we're now looking to pull it all out, right? So what are we doing? We just implemented a self, fourteen years ago, we were pushing a BYOD policy. One-to-one devices, let's move, we got to get on this, everybody up, we, everybody needs a device. What are we doing now is today? Or two month, two weeks ago, we implemented a policy that says, everybody lock up your devices. It's distracting, it's causing emotional turmoil. So please let us learn from past, it doesn't seem like we do this. Uh national or global, I'm just saying, please, South Kingstown, can we take a step back? Absolutely, it's a tool, there's no question about it, absolutely, it's coming, I live it every day. We're developing the machine language that is creating the AI that our platform that I utilize for my work uses. If I get a hundred AI pieces of guidance a day, ninety-five of them are wrong. It makes up information, it pulls and digs and it pulls out personal information and it crafts information. And you're like, what is it even talking about? And so you kind of reject it and have to then craft your own information. Um you start to see it on social media, you start to see it on Google, you do a search, AI gives you, oh, this is what everybody's saying. How do I know that's what everybody's saying? That's what AI is saying, and that's what the inventors of that particular machine language is telling me it's saying. I, I appreciate that Mr. Beasley bought us all um books um about Khan, Khan Migo, but the book was written by. His last name was Khan, like it, he was the, the author of the book was the man who was also who created the tool that he's trying to sell to schools. So I just beg that we, and, and I hear what you're saying and you're, you have it on your radar. It's a tool, it's coming, we need to, we need to be utilizing it in certain ways, but. Um I, I don't think we need to go headfirst into everything and I just hope that we truly have. A parachute to pull when everything goes wrong.
So I would say in terms of the, and I've said it from day one and think people will get sick of me saying it, but it's, it's the. It's, it's the guy, it, it, for me, any of the work is going to be safety and engagement, future focus. And it's also on a matter of, you know, to some extent, re- reject all extremes. Because we, we're going to either become polarized or we're leaving a whole segment. Again, we need to educate and have educators for, for all. Um and so it's, it's my commitment and anything that I want, I, I think that any sustainable future. As well as any sustainable present has to be, has to have that balance and so as. And with that, I, I bring also a, a, a healthy skepticism to, to any, to any piece of that. So as much as I uh enjoy the, the Sal Khan book, I'll also have a look at Audrey Waters' book. In terms of personalizing education and outlining everything from how Skinner boxes were about to personalize everything. And how BF Skinner quickly became the, the, the outcast, whether rightfully so or not. Um or whether it be our one-to-one initiatives um that we've had or cell phones and. And there are certain things that we can't know, but I can, I, I can let you know that in terms of the, the work that my, that I and, and the team will do and that I'll insist upon. Is that balanced work and that it's ultimately, while we would say, we ultimately want to go slow to go fast. I don't want to go fast just for fast sake, we'll, we will make sure that safety and engagement. Um and future focus, which means people's voices about um who they are and making sure that they can become. Not only the, the architects, but the builders of their futures, that that is, that that's. That's embedded in what, in whatever we do, and so I would rather, you know, go slow and try and catch up, but ensure everybody's safe. Before, rather than say, hey, we were future focused and this was the next best thing and yeah, a few, you know, X percent, yeah, that kind of messed up. A certain percentage that, that, that's unacceptable, so you have my public word.
Just a quick note, I just wanted to say thank you for attending professional development on the issue. I know it's been a community relevant issue. Um I also would love to see it as a future agenda item so that we can have continued discussion. Um and we are very lucky, and I say this from personal experience of just having attended um. A session presented by Dr. Yan Sun, who is a member of the URI Engineering Department. Who's part of the provost team looking at AI and higher education as well. And I, so I know there are some very smart people, much smarter than I am on this topic, who are having these conversations in our neighborhood, some who are. Parents and connected to SK as well, um and so I'd love us to open our doors and have it as a public agenda item. Or some of those experts could also give us um additional guidance of how this is being used for even our graduates when they move to higher education, if that's a plan for them. Thank you for um bringing it to us tonight.
Thank you, and that's also why I think in terms of it's essential to make sure that when we do do our strategic plan, regardless of whether it's a. Okay, let's start from scratch or let's build upon the work that's there, um that community involvement. It is involved in that AI is embedded uh in that strategic plan and subject to iteration.
Miss Steve.
Yeah, I'd like to, um I think echo a lot of the caution that Miss Matt, not saying too broad to the table, um this is uh something I work in every day with AI and. Uh it has a lot of potential, but also has a lot of pitfalls, and I think a couple of things we really need to keep in mind. Um you know, I'm glad safety is one of the top concerns, absolutely has to be. Digital literacy is going to be a big part of it too, understanding what is AI generated and what isn't, both for teachers and our students, that's going to be a huge part of this as well. It's like, how do I identify what is real, what is not? Because that's going to get harder and harder and harder, the more advanced this technology gets. And I'm already seeing lots of people getting fooled by images, which I look at, I'm like, that's clearly AI-generated, but a lot of people won't pick up on that, perceive that. So that's one of the things we really have to keep in mind here, and I think it can be an effective tool, I think it can be. Used in a way that's, that's useful for our students and generating content and. Uh maybe helping clean up grammatical errors or in, or maybe rewriting things in a way that makes um more sense for what their point they're trying to get across, if they're having difficulty writing something. Uh I think it can be used in those scenarios uh very well, and I think there's going to be other scenarios that present themselves. Uh but I think we need to stay focused on when we use AI in education, it really needs to be very carefully thought out. And so I'm, I'm happy to hear that you are taking a slow approach to this, not just jumping on the bandwagon and saying, we got AI in our school, this is great. Um I, 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 I think it, it really needs to be uh slow walked into the, the district with a lot of these things and, and it is advancing and changing daily. There's new things coming out all the time and it's frankly frightening sometimes, it really is. Um but is, uh you know, also can be, like I said, it could be a very good tool for our students as well, so we just really have to be careful with it.
Thank you.
So I agree with the concerns that have been brought, brought up this evening. Um I would say that possibly we could think in terms of. Um to jump off what Miss Boyd said, um. Do like some kind of a work session at our, um you know, second meeting of the month. Um and bring some of those um professionals that are, you know, deep into this work. And have like a round table type discussion, uh so I would suggest that that might get put on the, on the planning schedule. The other thing that I think as we move, you know, and I agree with what. My colleagues here have said about moving slowly um and investigating, I think also. Um you know, we talked about um digital literacy for our students. And um I think as we move um towards the possibility of incorporating AI into our classrooms. Um we should um also expand our um digital literacy curriculum. To um make sure that the students know what's appropriate, what's not appropriate, you know. And I, I'm only using this because I know it happened. Um you know, an English teacher gives an essay for students to write with a particular topic and. You know, that teacher not only needs to have the training and the professional development to, as James said, to recognize. This is AI written. You know, and if you've been teaching long enough, you know what a freshman in high school is capable of writing. Um and also that the student knows that's not an appropriate use of this technology. So I, I think we've got a lot of places to go with that, but thank you for bringing it up.
Absolutely, thank you very much. And so thank you, and that concludes my report for this evening.
So I would just like to comment, I love the new format of the superintendent's report. And that said, I will also make a motion to accept the superintendent's report.
Uh David.
I.
Hi.
Hi.
That passes. Next item on the agenda is. School committee business. Um and we will move to. Discussion Broad Rock Middle School.
Bell and update, I'll pass that over to Mr. Pogasa.
So, thank you, Ben, Chair. Um essentially, what we would be doing um on this is because of the shift that we needed to. Uh make in the, uh giving the five extra minutes. Uh because of our new two-tier busing system to make sure that the buses can get from the high school uh to the middle school. Yeah, especially in the, especially in the afternoon, uh because we promulgated or you approved a calendar that had. Uh start, school start and end times on them, we wanted to be sure that we were in full compliance here. And that we uh made a modification to the existing school calendar that reflected. Uh that operational change, and that's why it's there before you to, so that the community at large and that our promulgated uh calendar for this academic school year. Has an accurate start and end time for Broad Rock Middle School. Otherwise, there's no change uh to the school calendar before.
So just procedurally speaking, you just discussed the bell times update and also we're looking at the calendar, but on the, for the calendar, we need an action. Um, did we get to that one yet or are we still looking at? Yep.
For the uh discussion and action on the FY, I mean SY twenty-four, twenty-five annual count. And it states it was the first revision for the Broad Rock Middle School bell time.
Okay.
Which is.
My mistake, my mistake, I got.
Combine the two of them.
Yeah, I just kind of combined the two of them. Uh so the discussion, I, my apologies, I, I jumped right to the, to the calendar. So it will, um we can, so I can double back around to it. So the, the rat, let me go back, I'm sorry that I jumped to the calendar. Um the discussion of the bell times, so the, the uh. Again, the bell times needed to shift, or it was in my opinion, that the eight-minute existing difference between the start and end time. Between the high school and the middle school would not give sufficient time for the new busing routes. Um I made sure to talk about that with both of the principals. And their administrative teams, I also then went to all members or all of the presidents of all three of our collective, of our bargaining units. Made sure that there was nothing in our existing agreements uh that would interfere, that they would have any objections. They appreciated being included and thought of, um and they, upon review, um neither I nor they saw any uh. Saw any reason why it was not within management rights to make those, to make those changes. As such, um we investigated, is five minutes enough? Should we take ten? Um and Mr. Mahoney, after talking with the bus company, said that anything more than five or anything, excuse me, around ten or more. Would interfere with our elementary bus schedules. So as such, I landed in the middle and uh we went with the five-minute change in start time. Which then helped lead us to item C, the, why the revision of the calendar needs to be made.
Okay, so I do have a question about it, so um. I'll make the motion to approve. The s- um school year twenty-four, twenty-five annual calendar first revision regarding BRMS bell times.
I'll second.
Can I ask it? I, I, I have a question, and it's just the, there's the.
Any discussion.
Sorry, in between the December and the April, there's that little line and it says December tenth is counted as instructional day on May twenty-second. And then I look at the color coding and I understand that uh December tenth, uh the high school is in session, but. No, um elementary, middle school is in session and then also May twenty-second, the. High school is not in session and the middle and high school is. And so I understand that equals, so the two of them combined equal, I'm assuming equals the day, it counts as one day, but that sounds really. Just the noting and the wording on that is quite confusing and I just am hopeful that maybe in the next revision, some, that could be cleared up a little bit. It's just the wording of December tenth is counted as instructional day on May twenty-second, sounds peculiar. And I just wanted to call that out.
Oh, well. Okay, um well, while we're on discussing calendar, I, I believe I did actually vote against the calendar last time and probably will again. Because I don't, I still don't like having the last day, the day after Juneteenth, um I think we can still find a way to squeeze another day in. I think that day before Thanksgiving um can be a, a, a learning day. And that will push our, move our last day to the eighteenth rather than the twentieth and give us a little more leeway to absorb a one. a little more leeway to absorb a one, you know, one snow day would put it where we are today, but with this current calendar, one snow day pushes us into the next week and that just seems, um, uh, you know, that, that doesn't seem right to me.
Any further discussion? Uh, David.
There is.
I'm sorry, Anderson, Mr. Steva?
Nay.
Ms. Better?
I have the same problems with the calendar I did before, so it's a nay.
Ms. Boyd?
Aye.
Ms. Mattson Nancy?
Nay.
Ms. Busa?
Aye.
And myself?
Aye.
Right. That motion passed.
So if, if I may, the, the, the one piece and I, I must, I will follow up to make sure that it did happen. However, the, the one piece that I would, that I would say is, is that we can investigate other calendars. However, this current school year calendar as well as, um, the calculation of minutes did need to be, uh, sent to the commissioner of education, uh, by, uh, during last school year. So in terms of what's on file at, at ride already, um, it's just while it ensures thing, certain things can and obviously can't be undone. Um, it is just a piece of consideration that we might have this calendar being on file, um, as statutorily required, uh, may have occurred already. So in terms of our ability to change, um, start and end days for the calendar that's been in a substantial way, um, I'll, I'll need to investigate.
Thank you, Mr. Pogasa. Okay, next item on the agenda is a discussion and action in FY twenty-five budget amendment. So Patrick, how are you?
Good. How are you? Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the committee. So you have before you this evening, the first budget amendments for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. And just again, for those listening and watching, essentially, uh, all budget amendments over $10,000 or greater than 10% of the budgeted line come before the committee for approval. Typically you'd see these at a budget subcommittee, but you're getting them tonight. Uh, so the first budget amendment I have there is essentially just, um, a co-coding issue. So just trying to be a little bit more specific with our summer programming for the YMCA and the boys and girls clubs. So just moving thirty-three thousand dollars, thirty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars, uh, from that summer academic intervention line to another, other professional service summer, uh, in S R three. Uh, the bottom line remains the same at a hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars, just moving that thirty-three thousand to cover those two summer programs essentially. Uh, and these are S R funded, as you can see there on the event. Questions or concerns with that? Very good. Looking at the second amendment, uh, so essentially we have a, uh, we received some information from our technology department. So essentially, we have a lease for about seven hundred and fifty laptops and we have the option to terminate that lease and purchase these laptops for significant cost savings. So we can purchase the laptops for fifty-five dollars per device and five dollars per case. So that's about forty-five thousand dollars for those laptops. Um, looking at the savings on shipping costs and just the administrative burden, we're looking at roughly twenty-five, twenty-eight thousand dollars in savings. And, um, per our director of technology, about eighty to eighty-five percent of those laptops are still in good working order. So it's a pretty much a, a win-win for district there. Uh, so just moving essentially from the lease line, that fifty-five thousand, seventy-eight dollars budgeted there to the hardware line for, uh, forty-five thousand dollars. So it's just a recoding because now we're not leasing, we're purchasing them and we will own the assets. So any questions there? Excellent. So I finally ask your approval of these budget amendments. Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-five budget amendments as presented, um, by Mr. Kilpatrick.
Second.
All of David?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes. Next item on the agenda is a discussion and action and a request to reallocate capital funds for the new South Kingston High School. We have done a well drilling project.
Yes. So, uh, I do have a very short presentation just to walk you through the request this evening. Very simple, very straightforward. So back on November twenty-eighth of last year, the committee voted to commit, uh, up to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of our capital funds for the OPM and architect design contracts for the new South Kingston High School. So the year-to-date, year-to-date funds expended total one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars. That leaves a hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars of those funds. Part of the proposed new South Kingston High School project includes the potential to incorporate geothermal, um, heating and cooling, or however that works, I'm an engineer, so if I misspeak, please, uh, help me some slack. Uh, geothermal well drill, uh, rough order magnitude, that's what ROM stands for. Uh, just received that, um, the other day. Uh, that was between a hundred and a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And so essentially, uh, I have a typo on here. I should have changed that number, uh, from a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty-five. I'm simply asking the committee to reallocate up to, we'll say a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of the remaining capital funds designated for the new South Kingston High School project to finance this geothermal well drilling project. Uh, on the bottom right there, I just have a very small schedule of expenditures. So looking at, at the original allocation, uh, what we spent for our OPM contract with Left Field, it totals a hundred and sixty-one thousand there. Uh, we spent, uh, sixteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight towards Studio Jade. I've been informed from the town, we won't be getting any more invoices from them. So that leaves us the hundred and seventy-one thousand. Uh, if you back off a hundred and twenty-five thousand, say, it leaves us, uh, what's that? I should have that. At a hundred and ten, it gives us sixty-one left. Um, one, seven, one, two minus one twenty-five. I should have this in my head, but I got forty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two left essentially. And the rough order magnitude, I believe, is attached to this agenda item in board docs. We received that from a, a potential contractor. And if you look at the second slide I have here, essentially I just have a few bullet points directly from, uh, Mr. Conti with Studio Jade. Uh, we expect to issue, uh, the bids for this project on the coming weeks. The proposed period of performances in the fall. It's a very nondescript timeframe, but essentially the fall is when they're scheduling that work. And the area identified for drilling is the east, far east side of Hazard Field. There's a lot of information all at once. So if you have any questions, uh, I'll have to try to answer them for you.
Do you want questions now, or do you want to have the motion and then ask questions?
To make the motion. So I'll make a motion to accept, uh, to approve the request to reallocate capital funds for the new South East Sound High School geothermal well drilling project.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Before we ask a question, I do want to do say some clarifying information and then, and then, then you can ask. Um, so I do want to share that when it comes to this geothermal well drilling project, this is a test. It's basically a test pit that is being drilled in the hazard field um, to determine if we can qualify to do geothermal for the new build or not, because there is a distinct possibility we can't with, but, but we're testing to, to see that we can. The perk of doing it now is if we can, it's already built. So they're drilling the well, we're testing to see if we can. Um, it's, and if it's determined that we can, the, the well is already there to move forward with, so it doesn't have to be redone. Um, and obviously if we can't, um, then we know that going forward and can plan accordingly, but then the, the pit would then be filled in. Um, this is a major, it's a major experience, especially for the surrounding, uh, community in that immediate area, included, inclusive of the existing high school, the community around it is the families, the houses, everything. And we are putting, there is a, a huge plan and initiative to move forward as far as making sure a butter's not, not only are noticed, but that they're communicated with in detail, uh, personally, um, being handed invitations to community forums. So there is a, a, a whole kind of project that, sub-project going on around this in particular, that planning is, is taking place right now and that will be discussed further in the school building, um, public meetings, but then will also be discussed in town council and at this table also as well. So that more information to come as far as logistics, but I just wanted to make that kind of information very clear before anybody approves or, or not. So, but definitely happy to answer questions as we can.
All right. No, I, I have no problem with the testing. I think that, you know, moving forward with this technology is, is, is well worth it. My problem is who's paying for it? This is a reimbursable cost, correct?
Correct.
But we don't get the reimbursement. The town does. I don't think that we should pay for this if the reimbursement goes to the town. So I think this is a town council expenditure. I think it's well worth doing, but I don't think it should come out of the school's funds.
So a couple of questions. You know, you're saying we, we allocated the three hundred and fifty thousand, up to three hundred and fifty thousand for uh, OPM architect design contracts. Um, what happens if we don't spend that money? Does it just go back into our budget?
Uh, it's just sitting in a capital fund. It'll be in the capital fund balance.
Uh, so it could go to other projects.
Correct.
Let's go, Mr. Okay. Second question, uh, and maybe, okay, if you know the answer, so the, what, what would be the potential savings we would see from a year-over-year perspective from, um, heating, cooling costs due going geothermal versus another option?
I don't think I can answer that tonight, but, um, that, that is a discussion that is going to take place with, with the, the folks who are the experts in this field who'll be doing that and, and we'll have forum to discuss that. And I'll bring that actually to our school building committee meeting. Our next meeting is on the twenty-second. Um, and I'll bring that forward and basically say, you know, if we want to see what our class, potential cost savings could be, but
Right, right. Cause I can, I can justify a little more coming out of our budget. If we're going to save lots of money down the road, but if I don't have that number, it's hard for me to, to make a decision and intend to root this matter about the, a bit more of a town consideration.
Couple of questions, and I'm not sure if Ms. Mattson Natty, um, can answer it or Mr. Kilpatrick. Um, you mentioned the building committee is meeting and I know that soon on the calendar. Have they discussed this issue thus far? So they're in support of this request? Okay. Um, helpful to hear. Thank you. I'm sorry. I'm not up on the current minutes. I was away last week. Um, and I'm curious as well if other partners have, um, shared this, this potential project and timeline like our athletic teams and if that has been vetted through them. I know folks use that, those fields for practice and for games. Um, so in terms of student impact, not only just our community and neighbors, but also direct student impact, if that's been vetted or considered.
So, um, Dr. McGar and, and Mr. Lynch are both on our school building committee and they, they're already making plans. They want to, as, as if this moves forward, they want to make sure that it, it works. So they've already made plans accordingly to make sure that anything that would take place on that field, um, would be moved off to another place.
So, Ms. Mattson Natty, um, you said that they were gonna drill, um, on this site, like on the east end of the field. I know zero, probably negative number really about geothermal energy, something or other. Um, so if they drill this well in the place they have plant, is it possible that they would find that they couldn't do the geothermal thing in that place? Then would they drill another well on that site?
So my understanding, and I'm not an expert in this subject either. It's not, that is not a hat that I currently wear.
Two non-engineers trying to figure this out.
Um, but they, they surveyed the, the experts that work for Gilbane and with Phil and with Chris and with all the experts we've put into place. They've surveyed the land and they've determined that this is the location with the most potential. They will drill there. Now, keep in mind that the drilling will take place and it will, it will be a forty-eight hour period of time. And, and then the, the place in the ground will be secured. I did have a little flashback to, you know, back when we were younger and the little person fell in the well and there was a hole. And I was like, please tell me that it will be secured with a gate and a cage and the whole nine yards and the, another person on the call uh, shared my, uh, my anxiety hearing about the well in the field. So it would, all security measures will be put in place, but, but it's only a forty-eight hour window where this drilling would take place and then they would have their answer one way or another. And then the field would be able to be used again and in a safe manner and whatnot. Um, but, but to answer your question that yes, the experts in the, in the subject matter have surveyed the area and that's the place that would be most successful.
I have a question for you. I'm hoping that you'll be able to answer it. So in the event that you don't take this and reallocate this money to have this drill done, will that, will they pay for it? Or who were you expecting to pay for if not? How would that get paid for?
My understanding is that the town will attempt to find a funding source to do it, or they would try to find an alternative energy source, essentially. Forget geothermal well, if they can't come up with a, geothermal well, well digging, sorry. If they can't come up with the funds, uh, to, to finance that project, they might consider something else. I have, I'm not privy to this school building committee meetings, but that the way this was pitched to me is essentially, um, it's consistent with my understanding of the original three hundred and fifty thousand dollar allocation, which was essentially the school committee's effort to make a, a good faith contribution towards the new high school project. Uh, my, my understanding of scope of this work and how we've been operating since last November is this is consistent with that same general theme. Uh, so.
So we allocated funds for the architect design. And it was a good faith effort to start that so that we were ready to go to meet our commitments by June thirtieth. We did that. This is different. This, this, this is a completely different project. I mean, we can talk about how wonderful this project is. However, we have no obligation to use our funds. And I think there are other ways that they can pay for this. They could look at pay-go. Um, you know, the town can find money on their end. They've got sixteen million dollars in reserve fund. Um, I think that it's unfair for them to put pressure on us saying, well, if you don't do it, we're not going to consider geothermal. I haven't heard that, but I, I would not
Speculation on my part. I don't want to put words in the school building committees or the town's mouth.
Okay, so that's good. Um, but I don't think we have any obligation to pay for this, especially when we don't get the reimbursement. So I just think that, I think this is a perfect opportunity for the pay-go funding, actually. Um, or, you know, I'm not sure when they're, um, you know, looking at doing the, the securing finance. Um, but, you know, given those other ways that ride funds, these kind of projects, I don't, I don't think it's our responsibility for the school funds to pay for this, especially when we, we don't see any reimbursement. So I mean, if we were going to get the fifty-five percent back on this, we'd have, that'd be a different conversation, but we're not. We're putting the a hundred percent out out front and, and yes, it, it is a school building, but at the end of the day, all of our buildings are municipal buildings. This is a municipal cost. Yes, it it is a school building, but at the end of the day, all of our buildings are municipal buildings. This is a municipal cost. And and I think the town council really needs to um. Find find a way to fund this.
So I hear I hear you, Carol, and I I understand your perspective completely. Um, I just wanted to reiterate a little bit what Ryan Ryan has said. It was basically brought up as a as an extra way for the school. District to continue with the good faith intent. And say, we're going to, we're going, we have this money. It's already, it's already put off to the side. It's already been allocated. Do we have the to, you know, do we have the appetite to cover this particular cost to keep it off of the? Off of um, the taxpayers, to keep it out of the larger commitment. Totally hear you, though. I hear what you're saying and and that's why, but. That's why, hold on a sec. There there we are a committee and we each get our voice and we can each vote and and I I hear what you're saying. I truly do. And the town council, you know, we if whether this board right now, you know, approves or denies it. If we deny it, then we go back to school building committee and we go back to the town and we say. The school's not willing to use that. We have other capital funds that we want to invest that money in. And and that's the direction we go in, and then the town. Can, you know, sort out a different source or. Obviously, the risk is. They won't, but we don't know what they'll do. We haven't asked them yet.
But the other thing is. We're going down to a. A pretty low level in our fund balance to because we have a lot of repair projects and things we need to do. And. I I've stated, I I don't think it's best practices. Yes, we have a policy that can go down that low. It's not best practices to be that low. So if we can save some of this money for our fund balance to make us a healthier. You know. Fiscal, fiscally stat as a district. When they have sixteen million dollars in reserve funds and we're bringing our super low. I I that's I for many reasons, it's not the project. It's just not our responsibility to pay for it when when we're doing all we can. To, you know, make all the repairs and everything else to our schools. So I I I understand. We want to get this done. But it's. It needs to be on them.
Although I agree with with what you're saying as well, I still have to go back to. When. We allotted gated. Agreed as a committee to allocate up to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that we could secure. Our ability. To have a new school building. We did that, and we did that in good faith and saying. We, as a school district. Are contributing. Because we were asked that, what were we gonna do? What savings were we gonna have to be able to contribute to the new school building? And. It came up that they needed three up to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be able to do that. The money was already allotted for the school project, so I think. Because they have not spent it or. That we should not be trying to pull it back in any sense of form of word and just. Move forward because. When I think of it, we are still as a district contributing to. Our new school building. And we can't have, we don't. We don't want these people who. Helped us to pass this bond say, oh, well, you know, now the school committee doesn't want anything to do with this. They want the taxpayers to pay for it. We can't do that. We need to. Stay in good faith as we was in the beginning and. We allot a case money. The the fact, the fact that. Um. The reimbursement. Goes to the town and not to us. I can't say in a public space how that makes me feel. But that like eats away at me every time I think of it. But we can't do anything to control that at the moment. We also. You know, if if we. Turn this down. As much as I agree with what Ms. Vetta and Mr. Restivo said about. The town should, I agree with the town should. Step up and and pay some of that. Um. I. I. I'm afraid to. Say no to this. Because I don't know as the town council would. Would support it. Um, we um. Put aside three hundred fifty up to three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um. For. Um, the the. Initial expenses and beginning the high school project. And. Um. We have paid, we out of that three hundred fifty thousand dollars, we have spent. Um. A total of a hundred seventy one. Thousand dollars. And so, um. We have. About. Uh, oh. I don't know, a hundred and seventy something thousand dollars left over. And. Um. Yeah, he said there was an error there. Um. So we have the hundred and seventy. Mister Kilpatrick said that he had a wrong number.
So when I first.
Okay, so we have a hundred and seventy two thousand dollars left over.
The error was my ask of a hundred and ten thousand. That was that was a rough.
Your ask should be up to a hundred twenty five.
Yeah, just the timing of the presentation.
So we both made a mistake. The 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 two, the two math. You know, nerds in the room. Yes, but.
My mistake.
Um, so we have a hundred and seventy two thousand dollars of that original three hundred fifty that we. Um. Committed. I I know that. You can't compare our fund balance to the town. It's fund balance. But um, I I think. That we should go ahead, and we also know. This geothermal energy will say, I we don't know how much, but we it's it's a savings. And so. I I will support. Um. Setting that additional money aside for the well drilling. Children fall in. This. Ms. Boyd, do you have your hand up?
I'll be brief and not pretend to be an expert on this topic at all, um, followed by, I respect um, what the subcommittee has brought to the table as an option. Um, I hope that it would in the investigation um, present some data on potential cost savings. Um, that is a common question we receive from our town members and our town council. Um, so I think that's interesting data that I think we need. Um, followed by, um, I too have concerns, um, but I certainly don't think there is an appetite in our community to. Make a re- a request of our town council or our community members at this moment, especially. As we think about what is ahead of us this year with our bond project and our budget cycle. Um, so I would not be comfortable with that at this moment. Um, however, I would love it if your committee, if it is in your purview. Um, and or a future um, request of this body of the town council. And I think it would be a very important question. It was asked several times during our last budget process, but. I would like clarification from our town council members, specifically what will these reimbursement funds be used for? Will they be a tax relief burden to our community members? Will it be an opportunity to fund additional capital needs that might come up from our project? I would like to hear a commitment from our representatives, what this large amount of reimburse money will be used for um, in our community.
Ms. Vetta.
So I just want to clarify. This isn't something that would be coming out of. The taxpayers. Um. There are funds that are already. Collected from taxpayers that that could be used, not not. So so that it's not anything that's going to hurt taxpayers. The other option is. The Pago funds, which have not. Been considered how they're going to be used at all at this point. I mean, we have. I I kind of feel like we're putting the cart before the horse. We're we're spending money when we don't even have a plan. On how the Pago is going to be spent. Or any of those things. I just think we this before we can, I mean, to me, this is a lot of money, a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars before we commit to that kind of money. I would like. More of a conversation with our town council to see how these things are going to be funded. Is there another thing coming up another month from now? You know, oh, we have sixty one thousand left. Are they going to come back and ask for that? I. Just because we put three hundred and fifty thousand aside. That doesn't mean that we need to use that money. We have a very small fund balance that. Is smaller than I think it should be. And so this. By saving this money for our fund balance, it puts us in a fiscally stronger position. That. So to me, this hundred and twenty five thousand isn't just. Money we're paying. It's money we're paying that. That. The other. Opportunity to use that to to keep us more fiscally secure is also on the table. And so I think we need more of a conversation before we just allocate a hundred and twenty five thousand to a project when we don't even know what the town council thinks or. What they're going to do with the Pago money or, you know, when is financing coming online to start paying for some of these things? I I would just like to have a lot more answers on these on on these type of of funding questions.
If I may, you had a motion, but without a number. You had a motion without a number. You made the motion, but you didn't suggest a number up to. Yeah. So.
I don't like the legal side here, and I do something like this so we can amend it. Okay, but I need to make a motion to amend, and then we vote on the motion to amend, and then we vote on. The motion. Okay. I'm going to make a motion to amend. Um. Previous motion, and it's a rec- request to reallocate up to one hundred and. Which one is it? One twenty five? Okay, up to one hundred and twenty five thousand dollars of the remaining. Capital funds designated for the new Southeast Sun High School project to finance the geothermal well drilling project.
I'll second her motion for an amendment.
And we vote on them.
We're voting on the amendment, all in favor, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. That motion passes.
Now, now.
You need to amend your.
So now it's. It's absolutely.
So now we've got it. Now.
Discussion on the amended, discussion on the amended. Motion and then a vote on the.
Those, do we have further discussion on? The the newly amended motion, and then if not, then it's a, then we will call voting.
Good.
More question on the concept of Pago, um, and I'm not sure who can answer this. Um, has that been a conversation in your committee for other funding opportunities and or? Um. Would a project like this be funded under, could it be funded under the Pago?
Hasn't been a discussion because I think it was really just a matter of of, um, and again, this was not, this is, we are not being pressured by the town. It was no one in particular person. It really just was a conversation like the money's already there. It's already allocated. Let's see if the school committee has an appetite to to, again, continue along the trajectory that we've been on. Um, so that we can get this particular piece done in a timely manner and not have to worry about. The other, the other components. Um, but those questions obviously can be answered going forward. It would just take, um, it would just take time.
Think what concerns me is what other projects might come up that we do need to consider under Pago as well, and and there are so many unknowns. Um, in the process, but um, it is, it is part of um, the consideration. I'm I'm grateful that um. Ms. Feder brought it up as an opportunity for discussion, and I think every time we talk about spending. Any amount of money, but particularly in this level that I'm glad we had the debate and the discussion at the table to discuss it, and um, I'm grateful for the committee's input.
If there's no further questions or discussion, I would start with a roll call about. Mister Restiva.
Nay.
Ms. Vetta.
Nay.
Ms. Boyd.
Aye.
Ms. Mass Mancy.
Aye.
Ms. Lusa.
Aye.
And myself, aye. That motion passes.
Very much.
So for uh, as far as anything else about the school project update, um. Most of our conversation has been around this, this particular topic of the geothermal well drilling. Um, we are going to be, like I said, having some forums. Um, with the with the butters when we're going to make the radius as wide as possible. Um, for for those informational sessions. Our next school building committee meeting is going to be um, the the last morning meeting of the summer on August twenty second at eight thirty in the town hall chambers. Once we get into September, it will go back to the evening meetings. Um. Trying to think of any other, any other hot topics. Um. We're just, it's kind of just moving along and and we're 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 continuing to work with. With all of our partners to make sure we hit our deadlines and. And um, and I I think that's it for now. Um. If anybody has any questions, I will absolutely one hundred percent take. From this meeting to our next to the twenty second agenda and make sure we discuss. Pago options. Um, to make sure we discuss. And again, I'll take it to the school building committee level, but we I agree, we need to take it to the town council level as far as. When these reimbursements do start coming in for for this project all the way to the full one fifty, like where is, how is that money being spent? And um, and you know, it's a, it's a valid concern and it's a, we all share the same concerns, obviously, up here, so. Um, but that's about it, and I'll have more of a a better update after our next meeting on the twenty second.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Aye.
Aye.
Some passes.